CSBG contract with that, the next one? We're gonna hold up on the uh on number two, number nine, twelve and thirteen if we wanna hold up on those.
On which one?
On two, nine, twelve and thirteen.
Good morning, how are you?
Good morning. We have good?
Good, good, good. So I'm here today with the CSBG contract and that is the Community Services Block Grant Program. And we subcontract with Southeastern and this provides us nineteen thousand dollars a year for meals for clients that go to our center that have access issues or low income that are not necessarily seniors. So, I have that and then I have a procurement request for two hot shot vehicles, they're a budgeted item. And we got a grant last year from the USDA and the grant will pay half and then we'll pay the other half on those two items. And that's what I have, that's three and four.
Three and four, so three and four together then, okay.
Yep, three and four, both mine.
Any questions, commissioners, we're talking of item three and four.
You have vehicles you're getting whatever you study?
These are specific vehicles that'll keep hot foods hot, cold foods cold. And they're for home delivery, yes, and they will go to La Sal- or Monticello and Blanding.
Well, you need a vehicle to keep something hot out there today.
Definitely, definitely, so. Those are my two things. Okay.
Well, next item would be five, building code ordinance, is Walter Bird here?
He's probably coming down the hall. Basically what this is, for this ordinance, when you look at the county's ordinance, we were out, out of date on our building code, which ones we require citizens when they come to the county and put in a building permit. We wanted to make sure that we were falling under what is accepted and approved at the state, under state code. So right now, the ones that it's approved, your twenty thousand and eighteen IBC code is what the state has approved. And so our ordinance is now reflecting whatever the state adopts as their building and fire code, their electrical code, then we're gonna follow that, so if they adopt the twenty eighteen, then automatically through this ordinance, we are falling under that twenty eighteen. So this gets us up to date and makes, making sure that we're following the correct building codes. And so that's what this ordinance is about. So you'll see this on your commission agenda for approval.
Okay. Thank you, Mac. The next item is number six, San Juan County Health Group.
Yeah, I think I've got three different contracts on the agenda there.
So it would be seven and eight as well, right?
Uh, yeah, I believe so. Looks like we're, we're up to amend and renew our current contracts for STD investigations, HIV counseling. And then there is an amendment there for parents as teachers home visiting model. They have increased our funding, they originally awarded us fifty thousand dollars for that program. They've been awarding us somewhere in that neighborhood every year to do home visiting where we visit with families with kids under, I think it's under six and pregnant women. Those models, various models are being funded by the federal government in different states to try to evaluate how effective that is, there's been some really strong evidence in the past that those types of models reduce abuse and injuries and that they promote, that kids are more likely to graduate from high school if they've had a nurse visit in the home when they were very young. So the federal government has funded those in various types. We initially did the family spirit model, which was the only one that had been shown to work in native households. That was what we had originally implemented. In twenty eighteen, the state opted for the entire state to do parents as teachers model, so we had to change our model to the parents as teachers model last year. Every year that we've done this program, because San Juan County is a high priority because of intergenerational poverty issues in our area, they have come back halfway through the year and awarded us more money, they've always trying to give us more money. We've actually found it very difficult to ramp up and be able to spend that money, we usually end up leaving it on the table. So they originally awarded us fifty thousand, they're increasing it to a hundred and seventy-five thousand, but it would have to be spent before July first. We'll do the best that we can. We will probably be sending three of our nurses to an updated training on the parents as teacher model since they're fairly new at it, they were doing family spirit. But we probably, unless we are able to open up a position and hire a contract funded position, it'd be very difficult for us, I think, at this point to spend all that. Anyway, I just wanted to give you a little background on those, are there any specific questions about HIV STD program or parents as teachers?
Okay.
Those are all current contracts and they're just amending and or renewing them. I think that the funding for HIV and STD interventions are going up slightly from four thousand to five thousand for STD, from a thousand dollars last year to twelve hundred this year. Anyway. I think we'll, we'll be presenting it in commission meeting for signature if there, if anyone to answer questions now if there are any.
Is there some, is there some personnel attached to these three contracts or is it just kinda spread out over?
It's, it's pretty much spread out over our nursing programs. We use various funds to support our nurses and these are some of those, but not all of them.
Okay.
Anything else?
Got any question, Willie? Uh, I guess not, but we'll certainly consider it at the regular meeting here in a bit.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Item ten, extension contract, Mac?
Yeah, so this is the USU extension contract, this is a it's a federally mandated program, so by federal law, each county has to have a ag extension. And here in the state of Utah, they run that through USU. And so it's something that, no matter what, we get to participate, but with that, we get the benefit of having their expertise and their subject matter that helps out our citizens. And so this contract ensures that they're able to work, we do have to provide funds for their program. The extension here, they, what this contract allows is the extension faculty and staff. They also, obviously they're housed in this building and so we provide them space in, in the courthouse here. But they, they provide the agricultural and natural resources, the home and community assistance, they're providing the youth development. They have the campus here with their faculty and staff as well. They participate in farm days, fair opportunities like that, but it's a great resource for individuals, you know, if they have trouble with growing, you know, their agricultural products. Whether it's, you know, from alfalfa all the way down to, to small tomatoes, they're, they're kind of the subject matter expertise within the county that you can go to. If you're looking for disease prevention in trees, they're a resource that, that is there. So this contract just allows us to, to push the money through to them and then just kind of cements everything for their services and everything that they offer here for the county. So that's what that agreement is for. So again, you'll see this today and on the agenda as well to finalize that contract and those services.
It says we also provide not only place to house them but for support staff.
Yeah, we do just our budgets and that, we've got, they're able to pay for their support staff through our budget. And it's a participation between USU as well as the county and so USU pitches in for their program, programming as well as the amount that, that we pay into their, to their budget.
Any question, Willie?
No.
Alright. Well, thank you, Mac. Here's Nick here, but the item number eleven, Goose Neck State Park Campground.
Could you take me?
Yeah, we, we doubt yours. Your excuse.
What I'm proposing, or my department is proposing, I don't know if you have a copy of the draft ordinance that we're recommending for the, for the building codes. Periodically, I'll hand this handout as well. When someone builds a structure, a residence or commercial building, they have to cer- follow certain codes. And those need to be up to date by the county. And so periodically, instead of, by default, we follow, basically what the state dictates is the, is the building code that they recommend that the communities in Utah follow. And every time there's an update, instead of coming to you and getting permission to, to do that update, what we're recommending is this ordinance, which would create a a section in our zoning ordinance, which would allow us just to, as the state updates their code, we would adopt those same codes and put those out on our website and have those available for anyone that's working on projects. So what this ordinance is just seeking is permission to add that section in our zoning ordinance, so we don't have to periodically make those updates. When the state makes those updates, we'll automatically follow suit and make those same updates.
How would verification be made?
How would verification be made?
Those, I imagine the federal code, state code.
Well, it's all, yeah.
County codes.
It's all, it's Yes, and, and once the, the state makes a change, we would also make a change and they do that by statute. So legislature every year will look at these codes and adopt in the, in that section fifteen A, one, one oh one, which codes they're gonna follow. And we'll just follow suit with that.
Oftentimes I've seen, so you'll see these, as the bills come through the state legislature, when they do update the codes, you'll see that as a bill and an item. The state is, is very good about going through and, and striking through, through those items of the, the IBC code or the fire code, electric code. That they don't, that doesn't really mess with the state of Utah. Sometimes counties have withheld and adopted earlier codes and, and not necessarily the newer codes if there were fire, fire related issues, so for example, up north, a lot of counties adopted the newer codes that allowed for the aerial, aerial fireworks. Well, if you're in a county that has a higher fire district or a higher fire concern, you may not adopt the newest codes which would allow for the aerial fireworks. We're not saying that this is the case anymore, but they've changed some of those laws that are a little bit more favorable for cities and counties now. So that's kind of what we're recommending is let's, let's just go in sync with what the state approves and then if there's any concern that we have, we can come back and modify this ordinance, but let, let's at least be current with what the state is adopting as far as their codes. Keeps everybody on the same page, I think it's also easier for architects and engineers as they're designing buildings, they're gonna design to the state code and to that, what has been adopted here in the state of Utah. So it kinda gets everybody on the same page, especially when it comes to building and designing those buildings.
And as you can see, those codes, they're not updated every year, cause you'll see some of those codes are two thousand eighteen, two thousand fifteen. They just update them as necessary and then the state reviews those and adopts the, the code that they think works best for Utah. I know with the residential code, I think it's in residential code that you have fire sprinklers in all new residential construction in Utah, didn't agree with that. So they haven't followed that portion of the, of the residential building code. So we're, we're comfortable with what the state's doing, we see no need to deviate from what they're recommending. This just gives us a way to streamline things to keep the information flowing to the public in the, in the best manner possible.
So these codes that we have on here has always been on here, it's just, there's no add-ons or?
Correct, and, and we've always followed the state code or the, the state adopted regulations. This just gives us a way to, without coming to you every time there's a change, to change over. It allows us to just follow what the state's doing, that's what this resolution or this ordinance is asking for.
When we looked through the ordinances, I think the last time we adopted this, the building code was two thousand and two. So two thousand and two was in our ordinance. So, but we didn't want to, somebody to come back in and say, well, you're holding me to a higher standard compared to what your ordinances are allowing. And so we're fixing this, through this ordinance today, making sure that everybody knows this is what, this is what we're, we're inspecting to.
Okay, well, the reason why I'm asking is that I see Monticello Blanding, Bluff, and Spanish Valley, they all have different sites as, as far as the code goes and recommended.
There's snow loads.
I, I, I was assuming that everything would be the same across the board or everybody.
No, the, the snow load is different based on the elevation, so that's why those deviate. So, so I'll be coming back in your regular meeting to ask for a signature, but any, any other questions of me?
I, I'm good. Willie?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You can hang on to that.
Okay, it looks like we're done, but um
There's Nick, Nick.
You ready? Good morning.
We're ready, good morning, sir.
I think you've got this letter in your packet, which is the county comments on the proposed Goose Necks campground and, and trail system. And, and I believe the commissioner, I was told the commissioners went on a field tour of that site last fall.
Yes, we have, yeah.
So I talked with Natalie Randall and we added some things that, that I think you probably were in concurrence with on that field trip. Basically, this letter says that the county concurs with the proposal there to develop a campground and a trail system. And then, and that's a mountain bike trail system as well as a short hiking trail. And I understand that at the field trip, there was some talk about maybe a mountain biking hiking trail connecting Mexican Hat to that area. So we've thrown that in there, saying that the county would concur with that, I guess so long as the Mexican Hat community was okay with that idea too. And then I also understand that you discussed maybe having some hogons there for overnight use in the campground. So that, that item is in the letter also, saying that the county would support that.
Yeah.
So are there any questions you might have on the, on the proposal? This is a, a scope, a scoping period for this proposal that BLM and the state parks have.
So any response from Mexican Hat?
Haven't heard anything from them, no. And I guess that would be, that might be something that BLM would work out with Mexican Hat. I think the way I understood it is that the biking trail system that's proposed with this is, is in the north and northwest of the campground area. So if there is any additional biking trails to be done, that could, could be at a later phase of the project. If, if it's something that people thought would be used. So there's plenty of time to, to get input on that.
Well, as, as I remember when we were there, looks like the ground really, really needed to have some attention. Gravel and maybe some heavy sand to, to accommodate the area for the campers and also for the tourists. And it was, I mean, it was pretty rocky. Maybe that's the first attention we need to do before we start developing on that.
And that would probably come in with their site design, once they got into the actual engineering part of it, right? Yeah.
Alright, Willie? Okay, so we'll have to come in our regular meeting here this year?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Uh, just a quick question, I'm just wondering if the BLM is getting any input from businesses in Bluff? I mean, I don't own an RV park, but if I did, and you know, that would impact businesses in Bluff. And you know, it's, it's, it's hard enough to compete in business, but when you're competing with the government, you know, the private enterprises, that's, that's a little tough. Anyway, I don't know if they, if they're in discussions with, you know, anybody in love for businesses.
And I, and I can't respond to that directly, Natalie Randall's staff would be able to give that response. Cause there is an individual who was hired who's supposed to be working with the business community. And whether he's had much contact with Bluff business owners yet, I don't know.
Yeah, that's a very good question, I think we need to look at that and try to have the, the local community or the business owners have more crack at this before the, the government gets involved in it. I think Willie has a question over there.
You have a class B rope? Is there one here on?
Is that the B or the D, Willie? I'm not hearing the
B.
B Bravo? Uh, there's not, I think there's just the, the state highway three sixteen and then the other roads that are in there are all D roads, the delta roads, as far as I know about that. Now that, you might see that one that goes out onto the, the south point from the campground, that's four seven zero four. That one is proposed to be closed to vehicle use to make that a hiking trail. And I understand that was discussed at your field trip too.
Yeah.
The boundary is the brown line.
Yeah, I'm not sure why, I see that's in the legend, isn't it? Field office boundary? I'm not sure why that's in there, because this is just a small part of the actual field office, so that's, to me, that's misleading to have that in the legend. Cause it doesn't, doesn't apply. It's, it's huge, that field office boundary is miles from this site.
I think you can kinda see it in the um
Oh, you're, you're right. Along the north side of the San Juan River, yeah, so it is there, isn't it?
The boundary. Do you see that, Mr.?
This one?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't stand out that well, Willie, but look at the north side of the San Juan River. And that, that is the field office boundary, the field office goes to the, I'd say actually the middle of the river, but they didn't depict that, so.
I understand the middle of the river, there was long dot, long dot.
Right. And that's to differentiate the Navajo reservation on the south from what's on the north.
Right.
Nick, you might explain who the collaborators are on this whole project?
I believe that's Utah State Parks, is there someone else that you, you are?
Isn't the BLM and the county also collaborators in that?
Well, the county is certainly a part of that, if you've been involved in the field trip and, and what have you, so. So county, BLM, Utah State Parks.
Right. The state parks runs that?
State park there, right. And, and as I understand it, state parks would actually do the on the ground management once this is developed.
So the state park's gonna fund all the upgrade?
I think there's a combination of funding. And I don't know, was the county gonna put in anything into that that you're aware of?
I remember that we, that we were.
I'm not familiar with any agreement.
There's just been a, a real increase in visitation down there. And
Yeah.
Over the last couple of years to the point that they think more services need to be offered and more options for visitation as as far as biking trails and hiking trails and those kind of things, so they, they wanna, they wanna upgrade the facility and, and offer more, more services.
Alright.
Find out who flipped the bill for?
And I don't know that that's even been resolved yet, I'm sure that, I would think that's something that's still to, to be developed. And, and could be. Right now, this is just a scoping, it's an idea that's been thrown out there and asking for public comments on it, what do you think about this? So there's, I don't know how much detail has actually been worked unless there's something explained that's your fault.
There was some discussion about that when we were there, I don't remember.
But there's been no, no agreements or
No.
Signed or anything is, has there?
No, probably not till after they get through the scoping report.
Yeah, that's what I would guess, right.
Then they can develop the cost associated with that plan.
How many days are we gonna allow for the response?
Through February fourteenth for this scoping.
Okay. Alright, looks like there's no other questions.
Okay. To, to update you on the forest service plan, that's been going kinda slow, I think, there've been no, no new developments on that. But they now, and they've been trying to get their materials ready for a public scoping period. So their proposed schedule is to begin a sixty day public comment period, March the ninth. So that'd be March the ninth through April the eighth. And during that period, they would have open houses and we asked for some open houses down here. So what they've come up with, and I'll just mention Moab, Moab would be one of them in the, kind of the vicinity. There'd be one in Monticello, one in Monizumac Creek and one in Monument Valley. So it looks like they're trying to cover a more widespread part of the county rather than just say the central Blanding, Monticello area with that. And then by the end of this calendar year, they would plan to have the draft EIS and the proposed plan out. So that's really all I, all I know on the forest plan as far as the new schedule they revised. The Bears Ears Management Plan, that's still, they still don't have Washington Office of Approval to sign that document. And I guess they really don't know when that would be signed, but And I guess they really don't know when that would be signed, but there is a Monument Advisory Commission Council meeting towards the end of this month. And they expect the document would be signed prior to that meeting. But I also think if the document's not signed, I've been told they'll still have the meeting.
Or is that meeting gonna be, you know?
That'll be at the hideout, and I think it's two days.
Twenty-five and twenty-six?
Yeah, twenty-five, twenty-six.
All day on the twenty-fifth and half day on the twenty-sixth?
Starts at eight-thirty on the twenty-fifth and then you say a half day on the twenty-sixth?
I think it's half day.
I think that's right. Another thing that's not in your packet, because we just got this, uh, letter, and I don't know if you got the letter. Not sure I brought it with me. But it's on, uh, BLM will be revising the grazing regs. Who did you, did every commissioner get a copy or something?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So the idea there is to revise the BLM grazing regulations to streamline them to help expedite some of the processing and some of the management that occurs. So I, I made this, uh, I don't think you have that handy out. This is, this is, uh, off their, their Environmental Board site. And this is entitled Talking Points. And they're streamlining opportunities, whether in billing, the permit and permit renewals, permit transfers, um, crossing permits, crossing our authorizations, as well as being able to have a little more flexibility in the grazing management to be able to, uh, act on, on resource conditions or situations in a more timely manner than maybe they're able to do now. So, looks like a lot of reading here, but this is a summary of the things, and you'll notice under each heading like bills or permit renewals, there's an opportunity line for each one of those. And these are places where BLM thinks there maybe could be some different things done. For instance, in the permit renewal, an opportunity would be able to, uh, maybe expedite that whole process, because term permit renewals now take anywhere, at least nationwide, anywhere from five to seven years to complete with all the steps that are going through. And permits expire at the end of a ten-year term unless that permit is transferred to another perma-te. And then there's a transfer that has to come about. So one idea to help, uh, cut off some of the time here would be to eliminate a protest period on the decision. The way the grazing regulations work is once all the analysis is, is in place for the permanent renewal, then there is a proposed decision that is issued, and that proposed decision is open for a fifteen-day protest period. Then if there are any protests received either by the grazing perma-te or the public or whoever, they resolve that protest and then go into a final decision, which is then subject to a thirty-day appeal period. So grazing is a little bit different in the protest or appeal phases. It's got this extra step, you could say, of the protest period. So one idea would be to eliminate that protest period, cause you still have that thirty-day appeal period on the final decision. So these opportunities are just some that BLM has listed for the public and the grazing perma-te's to consider in making comments on the proposal. And this again is also a scoping period for BLM's grazing regulation revision. And that's, uh, through, they'll accept comments through March the sixth on that. So if you have...
Are we gonna notify the grazers next?
Well, that's BLM. I'm wondering what, what you, what did you get as a, did you get something as a perma-te? Are you still a perma-te? Okay. I wasn't able to contact any, anyone in the BLM this morning, so I don't know. The letter that you've got came from BLM's State Director, and it did say, Dear perma-te or interested public, something like that. So I don't know if the grazing perma-te's got any more notice than that. And then they refer you to the website,
Right.
which can be a, a challenge, cause there's a lot of information on that. You wonder, what do I read here?
Well, their, their meetings to be held on this are pretty...
Widespread, aren't they?
Yeah, Miles City, Montana, Las Cruces, New Mexico, Elko, Nevada, and Casper, Wyoming.
Mm-hmm. Yep. So that doesn't do this, these perma-te's any good. I'll see if I can get somebody from BLM to know if they're gonna have any kind of local meetings on that. So if you do have any, any comments you, you wanna make as a county, well, let me know, and I'll also go through these and, and draft up something for your review.
On the permit?
Pardon me? Yes, on the grazing. And I guess we're kinda limited. Understand we will not have a commission meeting on March the third. And I think the deadline here is March the sixth, so I don't know if we can have anything ready in two weeks for this, but we'll, we'll try. We'll see.
Okay.
All right.
Anytime the government voluntarily decides to do less regulation on any public lands, I think that's good. But I might be the only one that thinks that's good.
It's the sad word.
I think less government regulation.
Talk about less government regulation. The oil and gas drilling are a comment. And, uh, uh, application for recapture four, three, four H, eleven, two, two H, application permit drilling to access, wrote including right away. What's the, uh, position? Apparently, uh, there's drilling from being going on. At last meeting, or two weeks, two meetings ago, I posed the question of contamination.
Of water?
Yeah. And they said, well, it's gonna take about at least seventy-five or a hundred years in order to
Or a thousand or more.
So I said, well, what about those people that live seventh generation within those areas? Are we not including them to? How would that look or work? If the water contamination is forever, how to clean it, you have no solution.
Well, that's assuming there's contamination.
There, yes, there's a potential. Potential, potential, potential.
Maybe.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
So
And I guess you're...
That is... And I've received some comments from, uh, Mr. Vayvo's, uh, area. Those people that are living down in Bluff, the mission, and they have a concern.
And I guess, uh, like Commissioner Adams says, you've, at some point, you gotta decide what's the, what is the risk or the percentage? What, what do you do? I guess what, what they...
Uranium. Uranium product. People are being killed off here and there just because of the contamination in the air. Particularly it's in the air and also uh, mining exposure and so forth.
Right.
The same thing, but what?
Right, you can die from radon poisoning in your own, in your own home.
Prevent those types of. Where they're gonna get their water? It's more expensive to probably, by that time, uh, a treatment plant or haul in water, live urgency. How, how long would the haul in water last?
I guess when you go out a thousand or seven thousand years, or whatever it was that study showed, how can we today come up with something that's?
Not only the contamination, but the, uh, the archaeological significant sites. Those are compounded.
I must speak to this issue. Uh, you drill a well in an area, that well goes down six thousand feet in the ground. It is cased in steel casing all the way down, completely from the top to the bottom. It is then cemented in place. The water aquifer, for instance, in Bluff, Mayor, how deep are your wells? Any idea? Hundred feet, two hundred feet?
I'm waiting for the fifty-year study.
Five to six hundred.
Five to six hundred feet. So that aquifer is a complete different aquifer from the one that is six thousand feet deep. And if you case that well in, in a metal casing and cemented in place, I guess there's a, there's always a chance that there could be a breach of that casing for that, uh, safety. But I think, I think we're, um, you know, the BLM, the, the companies are doing everything they can possibly do at this point to make sure that there's, there's not a contamination down to the six hundred foot level for sure, but they're trying to make sure that there's no contamination down to six thousand feet deep by putting a metal casing and, and a, and a cement, uh, plot or a, um, barrier down in there. So, um,
Yeah.
You know, to say, say there's...
Let's say a fault line. If it's in the fault line, if that activity goes on, that metal case is just like a sponge, it break right in there. The force of nature is a lot stronger than man-made steel.
Is it in the fault line?
I don't know.
I don't, not that I'm aware of.
So those, those types of studies are not included?
I think they are. I think the BLM does extensive studies and extensive work to protect the environment when, when a well is, is applied for and, and drilled.
I think we're, um, taking positions from personal perspectives, as far as I know. With as many oil wells that we have in Aneth, there is no precautions. It doesn't matter how deep the, the, the well might be. I think the, uh, the first thing is to study to see who is all, um, benefiting from what's there. Bluff is an area where a lot of my people from Aneth, because of the water's already been contaminated, this is the only place where they get water. And, uh, the other thing is it doesn't bruise right how they make the casings to, to the wellheads. And they continue to monitor, uh, the pressure on the casing. Anything is to fracture within the casing, the pressure will drop, so they monitor that. But first of all, from the get-go, when they're drilling, they inject the chemicals, which is the, uh, the clay, to run the well right through the, um, the layers. That's when contamination is all, all been dispersed until they get through the watershed or whatever is, is there. It's already been contaminated because they're running the drill bit right through it. After they drill it, then that's when they start casing. So this is what the people need to know. And, um, and with the, with the shortage of water, I think the BLM should have sat down with the town of Bluff and the, and the, and also the, um, uh, the people that are gonna be affected. What do you think? We're gonna drill a well here? If it was near, somewhere near us, I think a concern would be more a concern. Right now, we're looking at it because of the revenue. It doesn't matter where it's at, we want the revenue. That shouldn't be the case. There's already too many things happening. In my position, I would rather look at those, uh, factors before I make any agreement. Yes, the revenue's needed. But I think the lives of those people is more important than anything else.
Mayor, let them know, have you met with the BLM? About drilling? Did they come and meet with you, the town council?
Yes.
They have met with you?
Yes.
Okay.
And was the BLM told that the people from outside of Bluff is using the water as well?
Yes, they were told that. So we had about a hour and a half meeting with, um, three people from the BLM. Amber Johnson, Cliff Giffen, and Ms. Bowler. So we had an opportunity to ask questions of the beyond people and a pretty lengthy conversation with Cliff Giffen that is actually in charge of the surface part of it. It was, um, pretty informative, and the town council will be meeting tonight, and that's on our agenda to talk about what position the town council takes on behalf of the residents and the surrounding community.
Okay. Any other questions? Comment? Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Well, let's see, what time is it?
Eleven oh three.
Well, um, I guess we're gonna have to hold you next time, Jerry?
I'll make it really short.
I will allow you to do that, but make it short.
Okay, mine's, mine's pretty short. I'll make it short, other than my greetings. You know, you've always gotta greet with the northern end. That's the sign. It's always a pleasure, guys. At least the sun's shining in Moab today. It hasn't been for those of you who have, have been that way. So I'll do it really fast. And most, I got some printed, the stuff that's really needed, informational is printed. I'll just, basically, let me just get some of my little notes here, take a minute. Okay, we had, I'm just gonna go through my meetings I went through, which I don't know if I have to do that again, cause they're all the same. Mac was at my last meeting with Spanish Valley Water and Sewer, which was a good meeting. Mac got a lot of stuff to say and, and could work with them guys and learn who they are and how they work and maybe a little crude here and there, but good, they're a good group, okay? But Mac was there, and I really glad he was there. Everything, everything, all my meetings was I had a Spanish Valley, uh, water meeting with, with, uh, with, uh, Mac and them. I had, uh, a meeting, self-help home meeting, which I'm on the board representing San Juan County, which I do that every month, so that's just a monthly thing. I did go to AOG for Bruce, which was, that meeting was held in Price. Uh, turned out to be a very good meeting. Uh, UDOT showed up, and they gave me this information, which I had a really hard time getting it because he did a PowerPoint. So I had to go to the, to our secretary to get it off of tape. But it's about the highway stuff that UDOT's planning for our area. And we can either go... And we can either go over it or you can just read it to save time. However you want to handle it. This Jared Baird gave a little presentation and what he said, and he actually started with, the first job they're going to do is they're going to chip seal and work on the Wilton Arch area because we've been really complaining about how dangerous and et cetera that is there at the Wilton Arch. And then they're going to slowly work back towards La Salle Junction with their chip seal and widening of the road into the turn area in La Salle Junction. And then you can see the chip seal through White Mesa. There's three mile section of that. And you want to keep a hold of these because you know how UDOT is. So don't destroy these papers. This is right out of the horse's mouth, so to speak. Chip seal blending where highway turns south and heads out of town at two mile section. Chip seal small section on Highway ninety-five. He didn't give any details and I went into the, had Lorraine go into the computer and they hadn't even put it on the computer yet, so this was just in his, on his PowerPoint. So what you got is what she got, what his exact words. And then the money and stuff come right out of what he said, so just keep a hold of those. Best thing you can do is keep a hold of that paper and don't give it up. So you can come back if you have meetings with UDOT and said, in January such and such, you said this, 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 and this, and this, and this. Okay?
Okay, Jared.
Okay, now Sintla, they're the same. No, I meet with Sintla about twice a week. Nothing's happening with Sintla. They're not doing anything in the San Juan area. The BLM, we just discussed, all they had on was the Bluff area and the two APDs that have been stated they're going to work on, they're working on in Bluff. I didn't have as much, even as much information as Nick did. I got a little bit from him from when I went down to talk to him. So, but it's out there, so everybody will know. And I, they didn't even, they didn't even bring up that they'd actually contoverged with, which might have been this BLM and not the Moab BLM, but they did have a conversation. I'm hurrying up, Ken, as fast as I can. Okay. The La Salle Mine is still closed. It was closed as of last Wednesday. The Copper Mine is still questionable, hanging in there. What I call the industrial site or station is still on hold, which we was planning on that. That's the ones that lost their money that they were sending their oil to in New Mexico. So that's on hold also. And Forest Service, they're up in Limbo, they have no leaders. In fact, neither does BLM have a leader right now, so they're kind of jumbled around. I talked to Brian, who's kind of holding the fort down at the Forest Service, and they're actually looking more at what's happening at the Bear's there than they are. You know, when Mike left, we were doing the RMP. There are wilderness study areas, designated camping areas, and no camping on the loop road areas. And that's all been put in second level, so to speak. As of, I talked to Brian Friday, so as of Friday, that's the way that was. And only getting good Brian had to say, that was really good was that he's happy about is that. The Geyser Pass Road and our Loop Road will probably be worked together, so our flat money is coming in on the twenty twenty. And so is the Geyser Pass Road, so that will be kind of put together. Which the Geyser Pass is getting to be a great big thing winter-wise and the Loop Road is getting to be very, very popular. And other than that, everything's going well in northern San Juan County. And if you need any more information or anything, just give me a call. I'm always on my phone. Ask Bruce. Anytime he calls me, I'm there. Anytime Ben calls me, I'm there. So I have a meeting at the Branding Iron on Wednesdays where a lot of the guys show up and people who are concerned about what's happening in the North End. And it's worked out quite well. I might add, there's about, we have about twenty-two people that'll show up. Probably half are from San Juan County and the other half are from Grand County, so to speak. And we hash out everything that's been, that they want to bring up and it's worked out really good for me to be, to be able to meet that meeting. If you guys need me, I'm available. If Mac needs me, I'm available. Just doing my thing. I like working for you guys. It's been a pleasure. End of story.
Thank you, Jared.
Hope that was fast enough. Was it fast enough, Willie?
I would like to request of you to put those and write it.
Well, what I do, Willie, is see, I got the main information, but I don't have a computer. I'm a low-income person here, working for you guys.
You're driving a Corvette out here.
Well, the Corvette has, the Corvette, the Corvette has nothing to do with low income. I wish, you want me to sell my Corvette to get a computer? Okay.
Yeah, about ten computers.
And that's quite the way it works, Willie. But I'm doing the best I can with what I got to work with. Remember, I'm a, I'm low-key.
Other people give me documents.
I'm low, I did, I gave you, what I think's really important, I do give you copies of.
To me, everything you say is important. Therefore, you have to put it and write it.
Well, I can write it in longhand, but my writing is very good. I have no computer skills. When I quit and retired, I said, I am not touching a computer. So if I do get a computer, it's got to go through someone else. And so I do the best I can with what I got to work with and with what you guys pay me, so how's that?
If those correction people are on computers, they are pressing themselves.
Well, I'm a lot older than the Grandson. Are you, are you, are you, are you efficient on your computer, Willie?
Every day.
Hey, guys, we got a meeting to go.
Oh, I'm going to get Willie fishing one of those ways. He'll be okay. But the computer thing is very tough. And if I could run this paper through my Corvette, I might do it.
Okay, everybody, thanks to Jared. We're about ten, we're about ten minutes behind. And I will call this meeting to order at eleven ten. Thank you very much for all of you to be coming by. Commissioners, we have, first of all, I'd like to call upon folks to participate in a moment of silence or a small prayer. I would really appreciate that. Otherwise, I'm going to call upon Willie to do a little dance around the circle with feathers.
At least there's a fire.
Anybody would like to participate in a moment of prayers or silence? Yes, sir?
You want me to say it or just?
Either way.
He was just going to participate.
Yeah.
Amen.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioners, have you had time to review your minutes? If so, like to establish a motion, motion by Willie Gray Eyes to approve the minutes of January twenty-first.
I'll make a second with comments.
Okay.
I think we go back and look at the West Mountain Irrigation Company request for a, signing a letter of support for that letter, or for that request. Mac, I got, I found out some information after we made that motion. Have we sent that letter already?
No, we have not.
I think we need to take a closer look at that request, especially where it involves gating a road and padlocking it. So I think, I think that's, I would not support the motion as made at Navajo Mountain on that particular request and I'd like to have more discussion with the commissioners and with our legal staff before we, before we send that letter.
Do you want me to?
Well, I don't, I don't want to send the letter.
Okay, do you want to, I can bring it back in on the next meeting?
I would really appreciate that.
To discuss?
Yeah.
And so, and then I can do the research on the roads, gating and the padlocking issue.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, well, we need to look at that whole request again.
Okay, okay, we'll do, yeah, I haven't, with the legislative session, I haven't had a chance to draft that.
So your second motion?
Yep.
Okay, a motion, a second motion was made by Commissioner Adams to request for a recall on a letter that was supposedly had been submitted. And a motion's been made by Commissioner Gray Eyes. There was a duly called meeting, so commissioners, be mindful that this is going to be, yes, sir, this is going to be a recall by motion in order to bring it back to the table for discussion to remodification. Mr. Gray Eyes?
Yes, I assume my understanding is to have Mr. Pettit. The, throw to five.
Yeah.
With that, yeah. Yes.
I'll let him know.
Okay, before we call for the vote, commissioners, you are aware that, again, it was a regular call meeting and a motion was made a second and we voted on it. We can't just draw an item back just to deal with it before we discuss what we have made. So keep that in mind. The appropriate parties need to be called back in to rediscuss that particular item. So all those in favor? Okay, item number two. Citizens' comment, do we have any?
Yeah, we've got about five or six. Cheryl Bowers is the first one.
Carol?
And Jackie Warren's on deck.
Jackie, be standing by?
Good morning, Commissioners. I just come to you with a request. I'm sure you're all aware of the state tax referendum that was done in the state regarding putting the tax bill on the ballot so that people could vote. That was really an historic event because the whole state had to get together. They needed seventy-five counties in order to meet the new referendum guidelines, which means they really needed, Salt Lake needed the rural counties and so it was an interesting thing to be a part of. They printed, I don't know, a lot of packets, twenty-seven thousand dollars worth packets. And that was all done through grassroots donations. The people who are part of the group made donations. So San Juan County got eighteen packets and that was enough for us to get one hundred and twenty-five percent of our signatures. We needed five hundred and eighty-three signatures in order for our county to count. The problem is, is that San Juan County didn't finish counting our referendum signatures. So the posts that have been on Facebook recently, for example, all the people know that according to the list, only San Juan County and Wasatch County were under the required number of signatures. So basically, San Juan County's not being counted as one of the counties that met their requirements. There was a lot of people in this county who did a lot of work, hundreds of hours of time, gathering signatures from Monticello and Blanding and South. I mean, everybody went south and we've counted four hundred and forty-two signatures. I don't know why they stopped. They stopped before the tax bill was repealed and that's what bothers me the most. I don't, I wouldn't normally ask that the county waste time counting signatures for something that doesn't matter, but I really do think this is an important referendum to show that every, we want San Juan County to be counted. We want to be part of something that we feel that was not good for our state. And if you don't, if you don't count all those signatures, I think there's seven packets left to count, then San Juan County doesn't get counted as a county that met the required number of signatures. So I would just ask that you go back and count those signatures. I'm willing to donate my time, if that's legal. I'll come sit in and verify the signatures, if that's what it takes. But if this goes down in the books, I want San Juan County to be counted as we were a part of this process. Right now, it looks like San Juan County didn't care enough to do our part and that is not fair to those people who went out and gathered signatures. So I would just ask that you ask, I don't know how it has to be done, Mac or John David or who has to, who has to make that decision, but the signatures really need to be finished counting.
Okay.
And then I'll just add that, that we've got a motion later today to approve the campground at, a support letter? Yeah, the campground at Goose Next. And I would just, I didn't, I wasn't aware of this and I've heard it before, and so it's probably my fault, but I would just like some time to research that and what the effect that it's going to have on the businesses in Blanding specifically and Bluff and Monticello too, before you send out that approval letter. So I just ask that you hold that till the next meeting and we can comment next meeting if there are concerns, if that's possible. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jackie Warren, Doug Allen on deck.
Jackie Warren, Doug Allen, be standing by.
Hi, my name is Jackie Warren. I am the current chairwoman of the Bluff Service Area. Thank you, Mr. Gray Eyes. Actually, I'm here more or less as a courtesy to you commissioners. As you know, we were incorporated in August of twenty nineteen. Therefore, the Bluff Service Area is petitioning to be on the ballot, June thirtieth, to dissolve. We have, and you'll see in your little packets, we have a letter from the mayor of Bluff who has assumed all our physical and duties, signed and sealed as of the first of the year. We have gathered the required signatures to be placed on the June thirtieth ballot. I just dropped them off at your office, John David. Once the signatures are verified and the petition is certified, we must have two hearings before the June thirtieth vote. So I am just informing you of what we're going on, in case you hear rumors what's happening in Bluff. We will be dissolved. Does anyone have any questions?
Dissolve? What?
Dissolve the Bluff Service Area. Originally, twenty-some years ago, it was the San Juan County Special Service District Number One. In two thousand and seven, the state legislature changed it to the Bluff Service Area. There doesn't need to be two parallel governments running at the same time, especially since the town has assumed all our assets and responsibilities. The main reason, Chairman Gray Eyes, is to save the county money.
Okay.
We don't need any, we won't need any more tax money. We'll just go away.
You say collecting diverted to my car.
Mr. Gray Eyes, I've seen your car and you could probably use a Corvette.
We never hear any rumors about that.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner.
I don't know why you'd even say that.
So this, like I said, this is just a courtesy to let you know what's going on if you hear it, so thank you for your time.
Doug?
Amanda Pudmore on deck.
Amanda Pudmore, be standing by.
Thank you. I just, on this proposal for the BLM, proposal for Goose Next, one thing I'd like to say, when you're looking at the increase at Goose Next, I bet you can put a lot of that on Bluff for it because we sent everybody we could there. So, you know, that's a good problem for San Juan County, have more people stay in the area. The main concern I have about is a possible closure of County Road D four seven oh four. I understand what they're saying in there that they don't want people camping on the rim. I've only been out on that road once and there's, I wouldn't take my kids out there or, you know, grandkids because I'm afraid they'd fall off the cliff if they were wandering around at night. So I can see putting the road back and closing that off, but it seems like- So I can see putting the road back and closing that off, but it seems like, uh, to, to solve the problem, they're closing the road instead of just when they can solve the problem with a campground. As far as the issue of, of, uh, probably detrimental to RV parks, I think you got two pe- two types of RVers, you got the ones that look for RV parks. I'm in Bluff in the summer, I spent a year there, I want air conditioning, and you're not, they're not gonna have power out to the, that BLM campground, and I want sewer and I want water. None of those, you're gonna be all self-contained. People can find plenty of places to, to park RVs in BLM land in that area, where it's up, up the Com- Comwash, Butler Wash, and there's a lot of areas there. But the main thing is, let's not let them close another county road. Because there's people, you know, have limited time, and to be able to just take your vehicle if you've got the time, I doubt that many people really go out on that, but you can see that more of the Goose Next by taking that road. If that's cut off just to, to hikers, that cuts off a lot of people that don't have the time or, or the energy to wanna go and see the sights there, so keep it open.
I think that, I think that's a dead-end road, isn't it?
It is, they're just gonna take and make it a trail.
Yeah.
Instead of a road, it'd just be a trail out there.
That was the road that came from the Goose Next, out on that, um.
Oh, out on the other point.
It went out.
Yeah, you know, it's the only way you can see that without hiking and. I, I was, I was out there within the last two years, I didn't see huge amount of damage, I don't know what they're talking about. There was, there was campfire rings right, I mean, right here and there, you're, you're off the cliff there. I can see those being a problem, but, you know, signage would take care of that, it seemed like in a new campground.
Any maintenance on D Road either, do we, Mac?
We do a little, yeah, we have the D Road funds.
On D Roads?
D Roads, not in this area, not in the, not in the parks.
I didn't think we did any, any maintenance on D Roads.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Doug. Amanda?
Kim Henderson on deck.
Kim Henderson be standing by?
I'm actually gonna withdraw my comments, it's very good touch.
Okay.
Good morning, commissioners, and thank you so much for the opportunity to, to meet and speak with you today. Um, my name is Amanda Podmore, from the community of Bluff, and I'm also a contractor for the National Parks Conservation Association. Um, in the work that I do throughout the county, I hear a lot about the importance of quality of life in our coun- in our county, and how economic diversity is a big piece of that. Um, and I know that a lot of communities in our county depend on oil and gas revenue and jobs to varying degrees as a piece of that quality of life. However, I am pretty concerned that this current BLM proposal for two oil and gas fracking wells, just five and seven miles north of Bluff, would have disproportionate effects of the quality of life on Bluff and adjacent communities. Um, so I wanna talk to you about three, three big concerns I have with that proposal for two fracking wells. Um, the first is that I feel like the BLM has failed to fully analyze the impacts on, um, environmental justice communities in the area. The BLM is bound by, by NEPA to look at the impacts on communities that are low-income or minority populations. And the BLM acknowledged that those communities do exist in the vicinity of these wells. However, they said they will not be disproportionately impacted. I feel that is, um, a false, um, conclusion for them to come to. I've been talking to chapter house leaders, I've been talking to Saint Christopher's Mission. I know people travel from Montezuma Creek, and if sometimes even as far as Monument Valley to get clean drinking water from the mission. Um, so if this clean and affordable, um, water is not available to people in the future, this will really, really harm certain populations in the county. Second, um, I'm alarmed the BLM did not analyze at all fracking in this environmental analysis that they issued. Um, from my understanding, this is the first time the Bluff aquifer will be fracked, so it's not just a regular oil and gas well, it's actually fracking. Um, and, so we need to really understand the impacts to groundwater and potential migration of like flack- fracking fluids or hydrocarbons through fault lines or through orphan wells in the area that could be caused by fracking. Um, the BLM not only did not analyze it in the EA, but fracking is not even mentioned in the BLM's resource management plan. It's not even mentioned in their, um, oil and gas reasonable foreseeable development scenario, so the BLM really needs to take a close look at this. Um, the third issue is that, as Mayor Leppinen mentioned, Bluff is currently undergoing a fifty-year water supply study that'll come out, um, this summer. And I think it's really critical that the BLM have that information in front of them when they're making this decision. The BLM and the USGS's study of this, um, fracking proposal found that the contamination rates of the, of the contamination coming down to Bluff in the San Juan River could increase if, um, if withdrawal rates increase in the area. And this study that Bluff is currently going through is looking at just that, how the withdrawal rates in Bluff could, uh, could change. So I asked the county to consider weighing in with a letter to the BLM. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Amanda. Okay, that will conclude the, uh, the citizens' comment. We're gonna go down to number three, um, the CDBG contract, Tammy? I believe number four is yours too?
Yes, three and four, this is for you. So I spoke to you this morning about the CSBG contract. Would you like me to revisit the terms of that contract? At this time? So the C- CSBG contract is the Community Service Block Grant Program. It provides us nineteen thousand dollars a year. It is for mills, for people that have access issues or low income, and seniors at the centers. And I have that for signature. I'm sorry.
Commissioners?
Motion to approve the signature.
Okay. All those in favor and, uh,
Aye.
determine to sign this?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
And the next item I have is a procurement request to purchase two hot cold transport vehicles for the Monticello and Blanding senior centers. Uh, fifty-one thousand dollars of this will be USDA money, and then forty-five thousand dollars would be county money, and I did budget the forty-five from the county to get these vehicles.
Motion to approve the signature?
At the bottom, I'm going with, um, the first company, which is Patriot, their vehicles are forty-six thousand, the other one is forty-eight.
Okay. All those in favor and having to determine to sign to go?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Item number five, building code ordinance, Walter Burr. Walter. Going to lunch?
I'm back.
You're back.
I'm just requesting a signature on that. Proposed ordinance for the building code.
Commissioner Gray Eyes makes a motion?
Second.
Second by, um, Commissioner Adams. Any questions, comment, there be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good, thank you. Thank you, Walter. Number six. Um. Subdivision Platts for approval. There he is.
We've got four plats for approval, um, first one is just an amendment to San Juan State's Phase Five in Spanish Valley. They're meaning making two lots out of one. We did contact all the members of that subdivision, or that phase of that subdivision, they were fine with the change, so.
Phase Five subdivision amendment number one. Within section thirty-six T two sixty S, R twenty-two E, SLBNM. Commissioners?
I make a motion to approve the request.
Do I have a second?
Second. Who would this be?
It's up in Spanish Valley.
Spanish Valley. Any comments, questions? I have a motion, I have a second. Um. All those in favor?
Aye. Is that the one that's, uh, big one? John for the business development?
No, this is just in the residential district, this is.
Residential? Okay. Aye.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second, and calling for, um, um, questions?
Use this pen, it's a little easier to use.
Okay, where, 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 where does it need to be signed?
With the back?
Right here? Okay, we have all those in favor. Um, against, none? An abstention? Aye? So two, two in favor and one abstention. Motion carries.
Okay, and the next one, um, is also in Spanish Valley, this one is the Canyon Shadow subdivision, this is for some twin homes. Join the back, they're, they're along the highway, but they're accessed from the back along Canyon Drive.
Okay. Same location, same fault core. Um, Canyon Shadow subdivision. And, um, Spanish Valley as well. Uh, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the request.
Motion by Commissioner Adams for request, and do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gray Eyes, any comment or? Located right about there. Any comment questions, there be none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And abstention? Aye. Two in favor and one abstention, so, um, for county commissioners' approval, and I will sign right here, right?
Yep.
Running out of ink.
If you just click it in back here, so it doesn't dry out. And this one is Legacy Fields subdivision, Phase One. Uh, this one's up in LaSalle.
Legacy Fields Phase One. Um, commissioners?
Make a motion to approve the request.
Motion, Commissioner Adams, and
Second.
Second by Commissioner Adams, any, I mean, uh, Gray Eyes, any other comment, questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three, unanimous?
Okay, and then the last one is, is also in Spanish Valley, this is the Crimson Cliff subdivision. This is a Phase One, um, subdivision. Spanish Valley Drive and Coronado and Rio Grande.
Crimson Cliff subdivision Phase One. Commissioners?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Gray Eyes, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Adams, any questions, comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppositions, none? Two yays, one abstent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you think this is a result of the sewer water treatment?
Uh, yeah, two of them are for sure, in Spanish Valley, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. San Juan County Health Department. Um, Kirk?
Yeah, so just to reiterate, all three of those contracts are renewals of contracts that we've been doing since we formed the Health Department in twenty fifteen. All of those are for reimbursement of expenditures, so we would only be reimbursed for work we actually perform doing those, um, items that are listed in each of those contracts.
Mm-hmm.
Motion.
Motion, Gray Eyes, and second by?
I'm assuming he's making a motion for all three contracts?
Yes.
Second on all three.
All right, do you have them in front of you? I didn't reprint them, assumed we had them here.
I've got them.
All those in favor and signing all three documents?
Aye.
This is STD and HIV right there. And the signature page is on the second page.
We're missing one?
Are we missing the, um?
I think that's all we got, Mac, was the two.
Okay, I can print one and bring it back in.
Yeah.
Did you have another one, Mac?
No, those were the two.
I think just those two.
Had those three.
There should have been a three, yeah. The other one was for the, uh, parents' teachers home visiting. I'll have Natalie at the front desk, they're printed and I'll bring it in.
And this is where you want me to sign?
Uh, you can sign next to my name there, and then I'll sign it, um, in addition to the county. So you can sign right there. That would be perfect.
Find the other document?
I'll bring it in in a minute, I'll go have some printed things. You can move on and I'll just give it to Mac. Thank you.
Okay, USU Extension Contract, Mac?
Okay, once again, this is to, um, as we have the, the, um, USU Extension Services here in the county. It's one of those federal programs, um, that we get to participate in, and it's something that, you know, obviously, the public, um, utilizes this service, it's a very good service, especially agricultural livestock. They're very supportive of that, we do house them here in this building. Part of, um, our commitment to them i- is to provide the facilities, um, the equipment, property, as well as, um, uh, the budget that we participate in, um, that provides some of the personnel, support staff with it, and so. This contract here, it's one of those things that we need to have in order to, um, solidify not only just the agreement, but a means to give them the funds as well, so you have that before you. This one, they're asking for each of your signatures on here, um, so if it's approved, then we'll pass this around for all of you to sign.
Okay, was that, uh, commissioners?
Motion to approve, I think they provide also, this, this is a new position, they're providing a 4H director to as well.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Adams, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gray Eyes, and all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
You have the documents for me to sign?
That's what it says on your signature.
Sign this one.
And on page two, your left.
Hey, Willie? You're John Henry.
You say John Henry? Yeah, sign it as John Henry. Yeah, sign it as John Henry.
No.
I was going by your direction.
Change direction now.
Change direction, wait to sign.
Is Nick available? Or we don't need him?
Yeah, yes.
Yes, sir?
I think the item was the, the letter, whether you want to do anything with that.
This is number eleven. It's already on the agenda, so you need to go through the protocol and then we'll see where we stand.
You lost me there as to what you're doing.
See, I just explained the letter.
That was a comment, um the citizens' comments, so.
Okay. So what does that mean, what do you want to do with that letter?
We need to discuss it in a regular meeting to take a position, so go ahead and do what you needed to do here.
Here's that letter, if you want to explain that letter, what it entails.
Okay.
And for the record, we need to administer it, read the letters into the record.
Do you want me to read it? It's in the back next to it.
There you go.
So on here, this is um, it's addressed to Amber Johnson, who's the acting field manager here in Monticello Field Office. Um, the letter re- reads as follows, Dear Miss Johnson, San Juan County supports the proposal to develop a campground and mountain bike and hiking trail system adjacent to Goose Neck State Park. We agree that the proposed developments would better accommodate camping needs and help minimize impacts to resources. And the proposal would provide additional recreation opportunities and provide for potential benefits to local economy. If pri- prioritization of the proposed developments is necessary, we would recommend that the campground be given first priority with the trail system following. The proposed developments and potential economic benefits are consistent with the objectives and policies in the county resource management plan. Part of the proposal indicates or includes changing the use on part of the county road D four seven oh four from vehicle use to hiking use. Any proposed changes in uses of roads on the county's travel pan would require coordination with the county. We understand that mountain biking, hiking trail connect- connecting Mexican Hat to the Goose Neck area may also be a possibility in this proposal. We would support consideration of such a trail system if there is interest from Mexican Hat community. We would also support the inclusion of hogons for overnight use at the campground. Hogons would certainly fit this setting and help enhance understanding of local n- narrow culture. We're pleased to be consulted in this effort and are confident we can work cooperatively with your agency in planning the proposed developments. So this is kind of just a letter of support acknowledging uh that planning effort that will be undertaking. Um obviously, as they go through their scoping, um we can help refine this process. If there's any concerns or comments, we can take that back to them as well with this letter, but it's mostly a letter of support for kind of what they're proposing.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you very much, um Mac, Commissioners. We have a letter that's been read into the record, now it's at your uh leisure. Do I have a motion?
Question.
Or question?
There was a question that is today packed. As a result of improvement or to bluff or blander? How, how we can handle that?
Well, let's um, let's establish a motion and then um talk about it, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we put the letter on hold until we've been able to answer the questions uh that Cheryl raised about uh the camping and the question that Doug raised about the road to get more clarification on that before we move forward with the support letter.
Agreed, second.
Motion to um table the item and second by Commissioner Gray Eyes, any further discussions?
Well, I just, I, I'm, I'm not sure how we're, how we're actually going to, to do this, whether. Cheryl, do you want to bring input back to the county and, and Doug, do you want to bring more input back or do you want us to go out and, and try and gather the information on the county level, how do, how do you want to, I'm not sure how you want to move forward with this.
If you're good with that, I'll reach out to local RV park owners and my, my biggest concern is the, is possibly the hogon competing with there was people in the area that provide that service competing with that and that if there's no, if there's no water and electricity, I think it is a different, you know, different service than what we're providing locally. But I think it'd be good to ask them, I'm happy to reach out and, and let you know what input.
I think this, this all came at the request of people who were visiting that area, they, they were requesting if there was a place they could park their campers and apparently some of them have been taking their campers down the D road and parking them down there and so um the state parks people said, you know, people are gonna bring their camp trailers in here and park them and kind of helter skelter, maybe we need to develop an area so that they can actually have, have a campsite that, that.
Put up a picnic table.
That's de- uh yeah, that's designated, maybe develop some restrooms. And then in addition to that, they talked about it developing some mountain bike, um not mountain bike, but bike trails that they could, they could be there maybe overnight for a night or two and travel, you know, the bike trails and stuff, that's the kind of way I understood it when we went down there was they were trying to develop, they weren't ready.
I'm not for developing, I'm just not for closing the road.
Yeah, I, a- and I think that's, you know, the, the reason they want to close the road was so that they could make some camping spots where the, where the road was, but you know, that can.
There's plenty of room to put a campground without closing the road.
Yep.
I just.
Cheryl?
It's okay if I ask a quick question?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a reason not just to put no camping signs up on that road rather than close it?
Once they have a campground, I think they.
Well, I think Commissioner Adams' motion was to um table this and we seconded, we agreed on it, and he used the floor and over to you, so now we're open for recommendations from the, from the citizens.
What's the period of time you need to comment, Ian?
That's gonna be up to you to give us, uh, I think he asked you how many dates you want.
I believe it's February fourteenth. And could I add something, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
You know, this is a scoping period, this was a news release, so it's not just the county that can comment on this, any citizen or municipality can make their own comments too.
But county's comments are really strong and I think, you know, it may be just fine, I, I, I like the idea of development, I like the trail system, I think that needs to happen, but I, my concern is we need these people to come also pa- camp in our private camp parks where people are earning their livings from and that's my concern.
Well, I think those that want to hook up to electricity and sewer and that kind of thing, they'll do that. But I don't, I don't think you're competing with those people have, have sewer and electrical hookups and water hookups, you know, this they, because there won't be sewer and water and electricity down here.
Other than possibly the hogons, if there's local people that provide that service, then the hogons.
You mean s- local people have hogons?
Mm-hmm, that rent out hogons, yeah, there are. So, anyway, I, i- if it's the fourteenth, maybe you can make a motion to pass the letter after getting, if you have, only have to the fourteenth, that's not.
Yeah, our next meeting is after the fourteenth and so it'll be after their duty, I'm sure we can give them a letter even after that date.
Yeah.
Um, we've been at the past before, so our next meeting isn't until the eighteenth.
So um with that, um it sounds like we do have enough time for the discussion to re uh contact those that are going to be affected in any way. So um at this point in time, the uh, the, the letter is tabled, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? So no more discussion, once we vote on an item, then that's it, so um thank you very much and also for the recommendation from the, from the citizens on that particular items. Okay, Commissioner report, um Commissioners?
Well, um, within two weeks, uh we had a meeting. And Wonder Rock with the President Ness on the twenty ninth. Uh, regarding the uh proposed uh route between Ojetto and Navajo Mountain. And uh he's uh all in support for it. Uh, we discussed that and they will be um working with us on the right away uh for that route and a rough discussion as to uh how we can do gravel all weather in phases, uh those are some of the options uh that we talked about. And uh possibly servicing the toll road. But there's uh, if federal government doesn't participate, then that will give us latitude to do that. Uh, the other one is uh the road, the uh road maintenance. And President Ness apparently uh was informed by Mr. Silversmith, executive director for Endot. And they had uh finally finalized the agreement. Ready to go and the signing will be done February twenty fourth at T-Sus Bus Chapter where.
Just the first school bus routes only, right?
Right. So, that's gonna be uh done on the feb- uh February, in February, so. Next day, um we traveled uh that evening all the way up to Salt Lake, from Wonder Rock to Salt Lake. We were how many, fifteen minutes behind each other. And uh following day, we, so Bruce over there gave us some uh tour. And uh met with uh Senator Higgins, um we met with the uh other staff from the state under uh UTA Trust Fund and also UTA revitaliz- Navajo revitalization, so. We did make some contacts and uh it was good. That was the end of it, traveled back. And uh met with my, finally stopped by and paged and then to Tubus City and then to Flax, that there with my, my kids for the first time, it was a, a travel reunion, reunion took place, so. That was good, so. So, we'll probably be doing the groundwork to see if we can uh do some community education on uh the route, proposed route, so. That's gonna be uh an uphill battle, I assume. Even though they're my relatives and you know how your relatives are. You know, agree with you, it will take you apart. That's my report, thank you.
Thank you, good report, uh Commissioner Gray Eyes, um yes, we've uh met with the president and and uh we talked about the, the Navajo Mountain Road and kept on going and going and going until I had to interrupt their meeting, I told them that we're still back at the ranch, we've been sending messages and and calling the Navajo Nation President's office and it seems like we've been throwing letters in, in a dark hole and we still need to talk about the IGA and the MOU so we can get these things going. So the president immediately says, yeah, let's, let's make that a, a signing ceremony at T-Sus Bus during the date that um Commissioner Gray Eyes talking about. So um we're gonna try to make a big deal out of that and try to contact certain.
What's the date?
Um, February twenty fourth. So we all have to be there and um witness the signing agreement on the uh, on the roads. And um I've asked Mac to see if he can, if we can help out with some kind of um maybe refreshments or something. And Navajo Uta Commission and other parties, there's gonna be quite a few people there to, to do this agreement. And in the meanwhile, I've been out with the other news crew and taking some pictures um on the roads. And uh I met with the uh Chad from the uh county seat, we took a drone on some bus routes and took some videos and, and some pictures and interviewed some people to um get the story out, so that's been an ongoing and, and the closure report was um to two commissioners sat before the camera and, and you guys been interviewed up in Salt Lake, which was good. And uh in the meanwhile, I'm still out driving the road and I will be continuing to do this and probably up to about Friday, that's it. And I still need to go down to Navajo Mountain as well. So those are gonna be happening and the chapter meetings are pretty much on stall and just like anything else, um some community members passed away and I was called to the funeral, so. I've been doing that and uh the other concern that I have as a government development commission is the outbreak. Uh Corona outbreak and how much and how fast it's spreading into the United States and and it seems like been, I've been butting heads with the Navajo Nation Health Department, there's not a whole lot of uh information coming out on that on that thing, so they're supposed to be setting up some um radio spots and interview to talk about those um uh the outbreaks, so pretty much I'll be doing all of that and that's the extent of my report, first.
That is good. Possible question, the county now, now has a contract with the BIA to maintain some BIA roads on the Navajo Nation. On the twenty fourth, we'll take over the school bus routes
From Endot.
From Endot, from the Navajo Nation.
Yes.
So how many roads are left on the reservation that will be um maintained by Endot?
So I don't have that list yet, but they're working on that list.
Is that the majority, is that half of them or is it?
I.
Any idea?
They, 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 right after, right after we were working out and that's what I asked. And they still haven't, they still don't know a whole lot about.
Until they get us that list.
So I'm just wondering if there's still a majority of the roads on the reservation that are gonna be maintained by Endot and
No.
And whether that's, it's gonna be difficult for the citizens or not, anyway.
Yeah, it'll be a partnership, so the, the priority i- is kind of like you mentioned and that direction that you've given is let's first maintain those school bus routes and so they've gone, Endot has gone out with um, with their staff and, and try to make sure that those are actually school bus route roads. And we don't have that list yet, once we have the list, then we'll be able to, just, and what we need to do is, we also have to go back to the state and request uh funds for those roads, um for future maintenance of that and so we'll be.
Question is B roads, right?
Yes, exactly, and so we'll, we'll be. Yes, exactly, and so we'll we'll be able to go through that count from what was what we've maintained in the past. And which ones they're designating and then be able to.
So the agreement will give us authority to to request B-road funds on those roads from the state. So last week on Thursday was County Day at the Legislature and we um received. Information from the Speaker of the House, the President of the Senate, from the Governor, from uh some of our county leaders. And kind of instructed us on how we can help affect legislation, couple of things going on, um. Uh Commissioner, I mean Representative Lyman will have what he calls the Yellow Cake Caucus. Every Thursday morning at seven AM. In the uh House Building, if anybody's up there, they they're welcome to attend that. I'll be traveling up on Wednesday this week, I've CIB. I'll go to the Yellow Cake Caucus and then go to CIB meeting Thursday morning, there's also a UAC. Meeting from ten to eleven thirty in the Olmsted Room. Uh to discuss legislation that's passing through the. Through the uh Legislature, um Commissioner Lyman. Did make me aware of one bill that's. Uh going through the Legislature or or maybe it hasn't started yet, but. It's to address the needs of the um Westwater Community. Um just outside of Blanding. Uh apparently, um the Trust Fund. Um Executive Director traveled with um. State people down to Window Rock and met with the President. To talk about uh how to address the. The water needs and the power needs of the Westwater Community. And what uh I learned from Commissioner Lyman was. That there is a possible agreement between Navajo Nation who owns a property. And it's fee simple property, so it's private property owned by the Navajo Nation. They've agreed to put up five hundred thousand dollars. The um. Trust Fund is going to put in five hundred thousand dollars. Uh the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints is gonna put in five hundred thousand dollars. And they're asking the Legislature for five hundred thousand dollars for a two million dollar commitment. To drill a deep well. Uh near that community to provide the water. And then work with uh Rocky Mountain Power to extend the power lines over to that community, so. And that is one bill that. That will be working its way through the Legislature in the near future and. And possibly helping that that community out in that way and whether it actually. Is finalized with with those uh parameters, I you know. I don't know, but. But I think they are trying to address some of those needs, um. Uh I did take the county request to the CDC and it was. Passed unanimously from the CDC, so. Um now I'll be um presenting to a committee in the future, the. Request of the county to the CDC for um RS two four seven seven. Um reimbursement uh legal fees on the road. Uh that we did, that we requested, so I'm not sure when that's gonna happen, but sometime. The request has to be made by Thursday, so I'll 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 make that official request on Thursday. And um that's, I guess that's the extent of my report.
Okay, thank you very much and that will then conclude the reports, any questions, comment? Every none, okay. Um the next item would be thirteen, Open and Public Meeting Act training.
Commissioners, how are you doing? Every year, um the Chair has to request for open meetings, uh open Public Meetings Act training. Um that request was made and so I'm here to provide that training. I know you probably hear about it more often than you want to hear about it, um but that's the status of the law. Um what I'll probably start doing is I'll just go through just the basics of what this applies to. And if there's any questions, please feel free to interrupt me, I'm happy to answer those questions as we go.
How many minutes do you need?
Um, I could probably do it in ten to fifteen, depending on how many questions you have. So, so uh the first rule um for the Open Public Meeting Act is uh what is a public body? Because this rule only applies to public bodies, there are not a lot of public bodies in the county that it applies to, but the County Commission is one of them, as well as the Planning and Zoning. Committee and a few others uh involving a couple of the Special Service Districts, um by definition, it is created by. Uh it's a group that's created by state law, either by the Constitution or by statute or by several ordinances or resolutions. The county can actually create its own public bodies that are subordinate to the County Commission, to which this would also apply. It has to consist of two or more people, so for example, the county clerk is one individual, he is not a public body because there's only one county clerk. Um and uh it has to, has to be a body that is either expends disperses or is supported in whole or in part by tax revenue. So if it's a body that is entirely privately funded, then it doesn't fall under the statute. And they have to be vested with the authority to make decisions regarding public business, um that's kind of the the nutshell version of it. The important part for us to really pay attention to is what constitutes a meeting. For the County Commission, it's there are three of you, which means that if two of you get together. And it is to um discuss something that uh to make a decision that is either formal or informal. That would be considered a public meeting, so for example, if you're driving down the road. And you run into Bruce at the gas station, that is not a meeting, because you just happen to run into each other at the gas station. However, if the two of you get together and you say, hey, we have this coming up on the agenda, we need to talk about it, what are your thoughts? All of a sudden, you're starting to have a conversation over something over which you'll have a vote. That does constitute a meeting and it would be subject to the Open Meetings Act. So your workshops, your executive sessions, obviously the the uh Commission meetings in general, um all fall under it. As I said before, if you just happen to bump into each other on the road. If you're both up at the State Capitol for different reasons and you're like, hey, let's go to lunch, congratulations, it's not a meeting, it's just a, it's a just a chance, social gathering. You ran into each other, you said, hey, let's go to lunch together, so um. That's kinda just the gist of it, so more or less the rule of thumb to follow is. If you start discussing something over which you would eventually have to take a vote or make a decision, probably stop that discussion. Until and wait until um you're in a formal setting.
Meritorious questions, obviously, that I would have on this one. Say the Commissioners are attending a UAC. In that, UAC is providing training which may eventually come in as a funding request or direction from the Commission, do we need to public notice?
UAC, I believe, does public notice those.
Okay, so they're already public noticing for us? Say multiple Commissioners approach to legislators, um or they're at the. You know, County Day at the Hill, things like that, do we need a public?
The State Legislature is public, is publicly noticing those. Yes.
So, okay.
And and the and you you get a little fuzzy right there because you're like, well, it's the, it's the Commission who's meeting, but the answer is, but they're. Meeting at the invitation of the Legislature and the Legislature has already noticed up that that meeting is taking place. And those are recorded and there's minutes taken and all of the things that need to happen under the Open and Public Meeting Act.
They're covering it, so we fall under as a subdivision.
Because because you go to the state website and it'll say. State Legislature, County Day. This place, this time, this is what's on the agenda, so all of the requirements under open are being met. If the county wanted to, if the county knew we were sending the entire Commission up for that. Wouldn't hurt us to publish it, but we're really kind of covered under the, because it's a state legislature meeting, not a Commission meeting.
So would that be the same, say if two go down to the Navajo Nation Council to listen to that? Because they're public notice, are we also covered with the Navajo Nation?
And that one's a little bit tricky because open was a Utah State statute. And the Navajo Nation is not subject to the same rules. And so we probably should, if we know we're sending multiple Commissioners down to that, we should be noticing it up.
Cause there will be events, you know, that swearing in ceremonies, things like that, um this signing on the twenty fourth. Uh things like that, where we'll have more than two Commissioners there.
One, one of the things.
But I, you're still together and.
And and you'll notice, and there are things you notice up when Commissioners are going to meetings, together certain trainings together, and those are noticed up and and you'll. And you'll put those on there, one of the things to pay attention to, and this was a change in the law made last year, so. It went or it went into effect in two thousand nineteen and I can't remember, and I believe it was passed in in two thousand nineteen as well. Um but it was the definition of a quorum and what a quorum means, and they changed the definition of quorum, it used to be a little bit more expansive and so. Um quorum means a simple majority of the membership of the public body, unless otherwise, but then there's. To make it confusing, they said, but quorum does not mean. Quorum does not include a meeting of two elected officials by themselves. When no action either formal or informal is taken. And the term by themselves is not clear, and so if you, if they're meeting, for example, with President Nez. Are they by themselves? Probably not, um and so if there's certain trainings and certain things going on where we know that's going to happen, it's not just. Oh, hey, I didn't know you were gonna be here too. Um and that's where the chance, social gathering comes in, it doesn't, there's no harm in just noticing it up.
So if there's two, two Commission available, one absent.
Then it's a quorum and and it does have to be noticed. And so depending and and like, as I said, we're we're a three Commission body, so whenever two of you meet, you have a quorum present, um some bodies. Depending on like Salt Lake County, for example, there's much bigger, I think, I think they have to have four present in order to to create a quorum. So it's, the definition is a simple majority. Um and so the idea is. Yeah, so if you, if you, if you know, yeah, if you know you're both going to be there and you, and that there's a chance the public business will be discussed. Just give Mac a phone call so he can notice it up and he'll put it on the agenda. Or just put it on the notice website so it's been noticed up. And I think we're, we're really pretty good, especially when trainings and everything where we know. Multiple Commissioners may be there, we're really good about getting those noticed up.
Do online communications or mobile communications count when you're all three discussing in a place?
Am I okay to respond? I'll get to that and I'll get to that in the in the training, it's it's actually its own provision under the code, so. So the notice requirements, as I said, we're actually pretty good as far as the notice requirements, both Mac and John David are, when you go to San Juan County Materials. Ours is constantly being updated with notices, um things of that matter, we also do a good job of putting it on our Facebook page. Um face, our Facebook page is is more active than a lot of other counties, Facebook pages are as far as public notices. And that um go on, and so we, you have to give the notice twenty-four hours in advance, it has to be posted. I think we usually post it here on this door right here outside of your office, don't we, Mac? And so, and so it gets posted there, um it usually gets posted on the public notice website. If we know about it far enough in in advance, it'll get posted to the newspaper, um and if not, it's always on the, it's usually posted to the Facebook page as well. The uh the notice requirements are pretty simple, it just has to give the agenda item, the date, the time, and the place. It's super simple, um and as I said, with a lot of your trainings. There'll just be a notice on there that says the County Commission is going to this training, it's at this place, this day, this time. And that's all that has to be noticed up, and I think the UAC one is usually a pretty good example of. Following that because they know they're gonna have the majority of the County Commissioners in the state there, and so they just notice it up. We, you do have to keep records, um as you can tell, we broadcasting, recording, and he's taking minutes, um and so. Those are all things that are required, um keeping both. Um audio recordings as well as minutes, and you do have to keep both, you can't substitute one for the other, they both have to be kept. And all of these records are subject to Grandma, um they can be requested by anybody at any time under the Grandma statute. And then, um as far as. And I, and this will kind of tie into that, so. When we get to the Grandma, when Grandma and and Oma kind of cross each other, um. What is made available would be the official minutes, so John David keeps minutes, but until he officially approves them, those are not considered. The official minutes, um and then, um we also. Since we've been broadcasting, we actually keep a public record um under the two thousand seventeen amendment. Um where people can actually link and go back and review the old ones, and do we keep the full video or do we just keep the audio right now? We keep the full video right now, so we're also very compliant in that. Somebody can go on there and click on Facebook and I think we maintain a YouTube account as well for those to be reviewed by any member of the public who wants them. We probably saved ourselves a lot of Grandma requests because when somebody says, hey, I want that, you just say, well, here's the link. And they can go and they can review it. So in regards to electronic transmissions, it's section two ten of the of the Oma code, so um. Oma does not restrict you from communicating with each other, so if you have something and you say, hey. I wanna talk about this and you wanna send an email to Bruce or to Willie and say, we should talk about this at the next Commission meeting. Oma does not prohibit you from having that communication, you can email each other, you can communicate with each other. Um and you don't have to publicly notice that in twenty-four hours, I'm going to send an email. To Commissioner Adams or Commissioner Gray Eyes, um it's uh you're you're allowed to do that. Um the only thing that you, to be noticed of, and this is the same for communications received during meetings, all of those are subject to Grandma. Um if it's a, if it's a communication that's ongoing, it's part of the meeting. So you might send an email to the Commissioner saying, I think we should discuss this at the next Commission meeting and this is, and these are my thoughts on them. While you don't have to notice those up for the meeting, those, that communication is is still subject to Grandma, if somebody says, hey, I want. On this topic, all the communications between the Commissioners. The uh. The um. Attendance and what constitutes a quorum kind of comes into play here, so public bodies can meet. By phone or by other electronic means that allows the participants to observe or communicate. But you can only do that by adopting a resolution or an ordinance that does this, I think that was on the agenda. But I don't know that it's ever a finalized versions ever been put in front of the Commission for making those rules.
We have that as a notice on the agenda, it mentions that potential. Commission action components may be completed by an electronic method.
Okay, and and but are the, are the specific rules for it, have those been adopted yet by the Commission? Cause I believe it has been something that has been on. And I think the idea behind it was, especially in the winter when we have big snowstorms and and travel becomes a big safety concern. Um I think it was something that has been on proposed, but I don't think anything has been formally adopted on it yet. And so, um it's something to think about, um. As I, as I said, it's it's covered and you might wanna write this down, Mac, it's under section two oh seven of Oma. And it kinda lays out the what needs to be in there. Um if that's something that the Commission is interested in doing or having available, it's not something you're supposed to default to. But it is a nice tool, especially for example in the winter, if it was just entirely unsafe to travel. Rather than canceling the meeting, you could default to the electronic, the electronic version, um. There's some provisions in here for emergencies, um for example, sometimes an emergency happens and the Commission may need to make a decision. Sooner than twenty-four hours or sooner than you can all get together, for exam- uh like, and and the. Sooner than twenty-four hours or sooner than you can all get together, for exam- uh, like, and, and these have to be true emergencies. For example, if the bridge. At Mexican Hat washed out. Um, and now all of a sudden, the southern half of the county's cut off from the northern half of the county. That'd be a really big emergency. And there's no reason that you would have to wait. Twenty-four hours, just so that you could comply with OMA. The, the statute does agree, hey, if a decision needs to be made, funds need to be freed up, directions need to be given. You can hold it. There are some requirements around that. One, it does have to be an emergency. There is not well-developed case law on what an emergency is, and I really don't wanna be the test county. Um, for what constitutes an emergency. So make sure whatever it is, it's big, and that nobody's gonna contest that, that it's an emergency. Um, but what you do is you try to reach out to everybody, um, that would need to participate in that meeting. And, uh, and, um, give the best possible notice. So if that's. Like I said, if we're using the bridge example, you call Mac, you say, hey, the bridge is out. I've emailed all the commissioners. We need to have a meeting. We need to. Make these directions. We need to free up these funds. We need to get in contact with, um, the Navajo Nation and the federal government to see what we can do as far as trying to get this remedied as quickly as possible. And then he would post it as quick as he could, and you just say, it's an emergency meeting. This is less than twenty-four hour notice. Put it on the Facebook page, but say, hey, the commissioners in two hours are having a meeting, because this, this happened. Um. And it's, as I said, it's, it's the best notice practical. Um, and then even after the fact, you kind of go back and recap it as a, as a way to kind of go through it. Um, well, the more, probably the most important part of OMA are the closed meeting portions, and that is because they are so strictly regulated. Um, it's an exclusive list of what, of what can be on there. Um, that's all covered in section two oh five. You can feel free to, to review it. I'm happy to send it to you if you want. Um, most of, some of them are very specific to very, to certain public bodies. Um, the main ones that apply to the County Commission. Um, have to be, here's, here are the reasons that you can close a meeting. That is to discuss character, professional competence, physical or mental health of any individual. Obviously, we don't want that part of any public record. Um, to discuss collective bargaining. Um, if we're entering into a collective bargaining agreement, and the other side gets to sit there and watch your discussions. Um, it gives an unfair advantage. To discuss pending or reasonable, reasonably imminent litigation, it's the same thing. The other side gets to sit there and watch all of your discussions while they can keep their, their, um, their thoughts secret. So obviously, we keep, we close that. Um, discuss purchase, exchange, sale of real property. If public discussion would disclose the appraisal value or prevent the transaction on best possible terms. More or less, you don't have to hamper your ability to get a good deal, because your meetings have to be public. Um, it's the same with the sale of property. Um, to discuss security personnel, devices, or systems. Obviously, if we're talking about building security, that does not have to be a public discussion. That's a discussion that can be held in a closed meeting. Investigative proceedings, um, are also in a closed meeting, and then, as I said, there's a few other exceptions there. They tie in. The entire list is under section two oh five. Um, the, there are a couple of things you cannot close a meeting for that cannot be discussed in a closed meeting. Um, you cannot approve an ordinance, a resolution, a role, or regu- uh, a rule, regulation, a contract, appointment of a position. Anything that requires a vote, can't do that in a closed meeting. You also can't interview a person to fill an elected position, um, in a, in a closed meeting. And you can't take any final action in a closed meeting. So, for example, and, and you're all familiar with this, you might have a discussion in a closed meeting that requires a vote at the end. You have the entire discussion in the closed meeting, then without discussing the contents of it, you take the vote back in the open meeting. You're all familiar, familiar with it. You've all seen it. You've all participated in it. Um. Yeah, and as I said, uh, we're, you, San Juan County's usually pretty good about all of these. I've, I've had a couple from a few other counties. Um. Sent me an email chains where they, where some of the other county attorneys have said, hey, these things have happened, and, and what, what's everybody else's thoughts? And I've seen emails back being like, you let them do what? But, uh, San Juan County, by and large, um, we're, we're pretty good. Um. There, if, if there is an OMA violation, um, it can be challenged. So if somebody says, hey, you took a vote in a closed meeting, and you can't do that. Um, it can be challenged. There's a ninety-day rule on that. Um, any, any violation of OMA, um, person has ninety days to challenge the action. The number one thing that happens is it voids the action. So whatever action was taken is now undone, and has to be noticed up properly and redone. There are criminal penalties for closed meeting violations. Um, if, and that goes to anybody who intentionally, um, violates it. The statute obviously understands mistakes, but if there's proof that somebody intentionally said, I'm, I'm holding this meeting closed, because there's no way I'm talking about that in open, in an open meeting, cause people will be angry at me. That's not a good enough reason. Um. The most common violations, um, that the state sees are, um, for OMA violations are, um. Closing the meetings without taking a vote. You have to have a vote to go into a closed meeting. Um. Conducting closed meetings that don't fall under those accept, that don't fall under the specific rules. Um, taking votes in closed meetings, yeah, um, is a common violation, um, that we see throughout the state. Um, notice, failing to provide adequate notice. Um, obviously, sometimes things just get missed. Um. Um, and so they don't get noticed up. If a person wants, if a person does challenge a closed meeting, um, in court, the court will actually review the minutes from the closed meeting, cause, cause the recordings are kept of the closed meetings. And those will be reviewed by a judge in camera, not out in the open, to determine with it. Um, and as I said, the number one complaint, or the number one, um. Thing that happens if you violate an Open Meetings Act violation is it undoes whatever action you took. Um. You can actually remedy it. If you go back and you say, hey, at the last commission meeting, we realized that we took action on this, but we checked our agenda, and it wasn't on the agenda. You can correct that by posting it to the new agenda and retaking the action. It's not like, it, it's not like, well, we have to wait for somebody to challenge it. You can take corrective action yourself. Any questions about kind of the quick fly-through on OMA?
Commissioners?
Was excellent training.
There we are.
Sebby, uh, your slideshow.
The, this? So all I have is a paper copy, um, but I can make a copy of it for you, so. So I'll make a copy, and just wanna email directly to your email? Do you want me to send it to Mac to send to you, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you very much, and I think we tried to abide by that as much as we can, just like earlier, we took a position on, on this letter thing. Because we already took a position on it on a regular meeting. So my position is that if we're gonna do that, then we need to recall it, because we took an action on it the last meeting. When we take an action on it, then it's, it's a done deal to where we had to call it back through the process, through Robert Rules of Order. And then undo what we need to do, and that's exactly what I was hoping we'd do, but we didn't do that. We, uh, put the, the, the item on the table. While the action that we took is still moving. The heartbeat's still going. When we did that, we developed that, and it's still there. Now we table that particular item, which is what we wanted to do. But, um, according to what you have, we should have recalled that and say, okay, we took an action on it, and.
And then, yep, and then you renotice it, yeah, renotice it up.
Yeah, renotice it up, and then take an action, tabling. So now we have two items going. We tabled the, the item and what we took as an action in Navajo Mountain. That particular item's heartbeat's still going. So somewhere along the way, we probably need to, um, neutralize that.
Yep.
So, we, we understand. Thank you very much.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, Alex. Appreciate that.
Oh, just a quick clarification. Um, I'm on the water board. There are five of us. Three would be a quorum.
Yes.
Let's say we're on the agenda, or, you know, the Bluff Town Council, let's say there's an agenda item. Three of us drive up here, obviously discussing, you know, that agenda item. Is that a violation of, I guess it would be according to it.
Well, so, and this is gonna be, the question would be, are you covered under the umbrella of the county, because Bluff is not subject to. So if you know you're sending a majority, then you probably know just yourselves. Wh- but if it's like the water board, which can be subject. Then if they say on our agenda item, we're meeting with the water board, then everybody knows the water board's showing up, and everybody's having discussion.
Right, town council.
But if town council would put, we put on their own, because the town council might send a single representative. And that's not a quorum.
Right, but if they're.
But if, if they know they're sending a quorum, then we know something they're taking.
Can't handle another. I, I just, I got contacted from John Curtis's office, Laurie Folks, or his chief of staff, said she'd been trying to contact Willie.
I've talked to her.
He wants to come down, he wants to come down and schedule a meeting at Navajo Mountain.
I already set it up.
All right, good.
Good. Motion to adjourn would be in order, commissioners. Unless, uh, you have any other item, Mac?
No.
Okay.
Make the motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second by you commissioners. All those in favor and adjourned?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, folks, for being here with us, and looking forward to seeing you all again in two weeks.
Two, two weeks, uh, we can be somewhere else.